I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Welcome, everyone. Big crowd today. Mayor Protam, do you have any announcements?
I do. As all of us know now, it's been on the news and everywhere, but today we started a trial for the scramble downtown at the intersection of Montezuma and Gurley. And Mayor, I understand you were the first one to do a diagonal walk. Why am I not surprised?
It was interesting. They said, "Oh, it's time to go." And then they pushed me out there, and I was the only one to go. And then there was a trash truck coming. So I was a little suspicious.
So we're going to try this for a couple of weeks, and I'm just asking if you're in a car, keep moving quickly because we want to get the cars through because that's how we're going to be able to keep this. If you're pedestrian, please only walk if the All Walk is on. We're excited about it, and thank you for -- to the city and public works for putting the effort in to give it a try.
That's right. And Mayor Protam, as we had in the earlier meeting, if it works, great. And if it doesn't, we will remove it and move on with our lives.
There you go.
Trying stuff's not the end of the world, public out there.
All right. Is that everything?
Thank you. That's it?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I have an announcement. I want to bring attention to one of our distinguished members here on the council. We were at Arizona League of Cities and Towns a few weeks ago, and at that conference, they always recognize those with distinguished service, particularly beyond eight years, eight years and more. And we have one of those members here. Jim Lamerson has been on our council for 16 years. And I have this plaque that we received from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, "Local Elected Official Distinguished Service Award for 16 Years, Jim Lamerson, in recognition of outstanding service to municipal government in Arizona." Congratulations, Mr. Lamerson.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's an extreme honor to serve my country by serving my community, and I want to thank the residents of the city of Prescott that have given me this honor for this long. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to our invocation with Pastor Craig Hep with Hillside Community Church of God, and then Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Blair.
Let's bow our heads in a moment of prayer. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this beautiful city. I pray that you would help the men and women of this council and Mayor Mangarelli to act with humility and honor, to listen with understanding and compassion, to lead with integrity, to put away selfish ambition and selfish motives, and replace them with a heart of service. Please give them the wisdom they require to be the leaders the people of Prescott need. Help them to see with dignity those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons equally. Father, renew this gathering with your presence and with the joy that comes with selfless service. And we also pray for special blessings for today and always on our police force and fire departments as they protect our city. And we ask this in the name of your Son, our Savior, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protam Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Present by phone.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilwoman Siskah.
Here.
All are present, and Councilman Good is participating by telephone.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to proclamations.
The first proclamation is POW and MIA National Recognition Day, September 20th,
Ladies and gentlemen, in the absence of Councilman Good, it's my privilege to read this proclamation. POW/MIA National Recognition Day on September 20th, 2019. Whereas in 1998, the United States Congress designated the third Friday in September of every year as Prisoners of War and Missing in Action National Recognition Day. And whereas throughout American history, members of America's armed forces have made uncommon sacrifices as POWs serving their country under conditions of extreme hardship while remaining steadfast even when their treatment violated fundamental standards of morality and international codes of conduct. And whereas it is important to recognize not only those who have served in the armed forces, but also the family members and friends of our country's POWs and unreturned veterans, America's MIA. And whereas our grateful nation will never forget the pain suffered by POW/MIA families to live without knowing their loved ones' fate or knowledge of their final resting place. And whereas today and every day, we express our sincere gratitude to service members, veterans, military families, and all others who place themselves in harm's way to defend the virtues of our great nation. And whereas we salute our POW/MIA, who in the act of serving our nation relinquished their freedom to protect the liberty we enjoy. Now therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim September 20th, 2019 as POW/MIA National Recognition Day. So please come up and accept your certificate.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I would just like to remind everybody that the POW recognition event on September 20th is at 10:00 a.m. at the VA, at the Ramada, which is across the street from the big flagpole. And I do know that the mayor and Billy Orr will both be there because I received notifications. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2019.
Takes me a little longer to get up front. Proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2019. Whereas September 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations in which we'll commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law Number 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. I would like to ask those folks that are here to receive the proclamation to come up front. Thank you for being here. Sally, how are you? Do you have something that you would like to say when you have your constitution?
Just thank you for this proclamation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is proclamation for Oktoberfest Day. Whereas the city of Prescott, Arizona, and the city of Zeitz, Germany, have enjoyed a productive sister-city relationship since this alliance was officially agreed to in 2012. And whereas through reciprocal visits and cultural and educational exchanges, this long-term relationship has had a positive impact on the students and citizens of both Prescott and Zeitz. And whereas Oktoberfest, the most popular German cultural event dating back to 1810, takes place in Germany during the fall of each year. And whereas in a spirit of cooperation, mutual respect, and friendship, the city of Prescott intends to honor this timeless German festival. Now therefore, I, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2019 as Oktoberfest Day in the city of Prescott. Well, it's a real privilege to do this proclamation. I don't want to steal your thunder, Chris, but I've had the opportunity to hear from students who've been to Zeitz, and this Oktoberfest funds those students going over to Zeitz to have that experience. And I can tell you that it's very life-changing in the lives of those students to hear their stories. Many times, it's the first time they've left the country, and the relationships that they develop over there with the people in Zeitz and the students is really a positive impact in their lives. And so I really appreciate what you guys do with Oktoberfest, particularly with the funding of those students over to Zeitz. So thanks so much for being here today to accept this.
Thank you.
Chris, you want to talk a little bit more about Oktoberfest?
Yes, this event that we have is how we raise money to send the kids on the exchange over to our sister city, Zeitz, Germany. And we also accept kids from Zeitz. They should be coming here in a few weeks to spend a couple of weeks here. They come from Prescott High School and Bradshaw Mountain, and they actually get along and enjoy each other on the trip. Erin Knox and her father Jason, Erin was on the first exchange when we had two kids. This year, we sent 13, and we've had a couple first. You know, that happened this year. A boy that we had sent a few years ago just announced his engagement to a girl he met in Zeitz, Germany. We wanted him to learn about other cultures. We didn't know it would go that far. And but the thing that one kid said when he came back, he thought for a minute, and he goes, "You know, we live in a great country, but there's other great countries too." And that was the perfect statement, and it just symbolized what we're trying to do. So come out, drink beer for the kids. Thank you.
Let's move on to item 7A, please.
Readon Prescott Literacy Program. Okay. Did you notice that when drinking beers for children was mentioned, all the educators in the group like laughed really loudly? Anywho, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli and Mayor Protam Orr and city council members. My name is Denise Murphy, and I am here on behalf of Readon Prescott. Readon Prescott is a local, community-based volunteer organization dedicated to creating awareness about and providing supports for the literacy successes of Prescott's children and their families. We introduced ourselves to you last year at this time, when you so graciously proclaimed September as Prescott's Literacy Month. So happy Literacy Month, everybody. Readon Arizona and Readon Prescott believe that the literacy success of our children is everyone's business, so thank you for partnering with us in this exciting endeavor. Oh, sorry. A little behind on the clicker here. Last year, we shared our action plan goals with you. We are excited to say that we have achieved all of our goals, to include helping to bring the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to Prescott. Readon Prescott collaborated with the Sunup Rotary Club, Frontier Rotary Club, the Prescott Rotary Club, Rotary District 5495, as well as the Friends of the Library and the Prescott Public Library to bring the Prescott area imagination library, or PALE, to our community. Through the PALE program, families in the 86301, 303, and 305 ZIP codes can register their children ages zero to five to receive a beautiful new book addressed to them personally in the mail. This book is theirs to read, love, and keep forever. Registered children will receive a new book every month, and our Prescott children will begin receiving their first books in October. The PALE program promotes family literacy, excitement about books, and lifelong love of reading. The Readon Prescott Steering Committee would like to take a moment to recognize the organizations who made PALE a reality for our community. So if I call your name and/or your organization, would you please stand up so that we can recognize and thank you? Let's start with A.J. Sheridan and members of the Sunup Rotary Club. Would you please stand up? Hi, thank you, A.J. Thank you. Next, we would like to recognize and thank Noel De Souza and members of the Frontier Rotary Club. Would you please stand up? Thank you so much. We'd also like to recognize Kevin Pitts and members of the Prescott Rotary Club. Would you please stand up? We'll just -- okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Dr. Bill Arnold and the Friends of the Library. Would you please stand up? Are you guys here? Okay. Well, thank you to them. And we'd also like to recognize and thank Roger Saft, Tony Johnson, Martha Baden, and the staff and volunteers of the Prescott Public Library. Would you please stand up? And we'd like to thank you, Mayor Mangarelli and Mayor Protam Orr and city council members for supporting Readon Prescott and the children of our community. We hope that you will join us this Saturday, September 14th, at 10:00 at the Prescott Public Library for PALE's kickoff event. And we would also really appreciate your support of Readon Prescott's Facebook page. So if you could give us a like, we'd appreciate that very much. Thank you very much for your time today.
This is a really great day for the city of Prescott, and as has been the whole year. Talking about literacy, working with Readon Prescott, it's been my honor to be a member of the Readon Prescott Steering Committee. It's actually a state organization, and you've done great work. What a great steering committee. So I would like to recognize all of the Readon Prescott Steering Committee, if you'd like to come on board. We have a certificate to give Denise and the committee in recognition of your dedication and hard work in bringing the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to Prescott. So Denise, I'll give you that. If you guys want to stand up here. And I have a certificate from Martha Baden and the Prescott Public Library. So Roger, you guys all come on up here. And Martha will actually be running this program in addition to everything else that she does at the public library. This could not happen. Did you not know that, Martha? This could not have happened without Martha Baden's leadership. So we all know that, Martha, so. And I'm sorry that Bill's not here with the Friends of the Library, but there is someone here. Please come up. One of the biggest deals with getting the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is getting folks to agree to do all the data that's involved. A lot of data collection, making sure that when the books come back unreturned, that we're able to follow up. And so thank you to the Friends of the Library. It would not happen without you. So many things in our library would not happen without you. So thank you. Now for our Rotary groups. They are amazing. We wanted to do this. In fact, Noel worked with -- there was a program in Camp Verde. They came over and talked about it, and we said, "We really need to do that here in the city of Prescott." And so we had the Rotary groups actually came to the steering committee and said, "Would you like to take this on?" And they wanted to fund it. And so we went out and made this all happen. Rotary District 5495. Noel, you want to accept this for the district? I'm going to make you guys stand up again. Thank you so much, Noel, for helping us with this. Frontier Rotary, here we go. Come on up. Thank you. Mr. Siskah, come on out. Brandon Montoya is our president. Congratulations, Brandon. And Prescott Rotary, Mr. Lamerson, come on out. And Mr. Sheridan with Sunup Rotary. Oh, that's right. And Dennis is here. And of course, and we also have someone on the phone. Phil Good is also in Sunup Rotary. Good to see you. Yeah, absolutely. So again, once a month, if you're in the ZIP codes of -- what are the ZIP codes, Martha?
301, 303, and 305.
301, 303, 305. Children in that ZIP code that are birth to five years are able to register, simple thing to do, and you will get -- that child will get a book a month until they're five. That's an amazing gift. And with that, the books, as Martha has samples of, the books are also instructions to parents that talk about, how do you read this book to your child? What are some points that you could pick out? So the child is the -- the parent is the child's first teacher. Wonderful books that they're going to be able to receive. And this is a really wonderful program for the city of Prescott. So proud of the steering committee, the Rotaries for their sponsorship on doing this, and the library for agreeing to help us do it. And everybody come out Saturday, 10:00 to 12:00, and it will be at the Prescott Library. We're going to kick it off with everybody. Thank you all so much. I'd like to -- thank you all. Couldn't have happened without you, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
You bet. Good job. Thanks, Tom.
All right. We're going to move on to item 8, the Consent Agenda. Would any member like to pull anything from the consent agenda today?
I would, if I can get to it.
Okay.
But you'll have to -- the canvassing of the vote.
Yes.
I would like to have pulled off. I think that needs to be read in the public to not only identify the new members of council. I don't think it needs to be on the consent agenda.
Okay. You want to pull item B?
Please.
Yep. Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8I excluding 8E.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Councilman Good. All right. So let's look at item 8B. Councilman Blair, you mentioned you'd like to hear the names of those that --
I think, Maureen, I should have told you when you asked if anybody wanted to remove anything, but you know, it didn't resonate with me until I got here today that I think it was appropriate that you read the county statement or the ending totals like we have done in the past, so that public viewing, not only here personally, but also on the TV, can see the new members that were selected in the primary election.
All right. I'm going to pull it up here in just a minute, and then I'll give you those information.
Sorry for not giving you a heads up. That will just tell everybody in the audience that these aren't orchestrated ahead of time.
It's right here, Maureen. Do you need it?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
One second here. So on August 27th, we had the primary election, and we had three council members and one mayor seat on the ballot. The mayor ran unopposed, and he received the majority of the ballots cast. There's also two of the candidates that ran for council were selected. They did receive the majority of valid ballots cast at the primary. The third seat did not receive the majority, so that means that we will have a runoff election, and that will take place on November 5th. So the total we received was, there was 30,469 registered voters, and there was 15,960 ballots cast, and those were -- excuse me, valid ballots cast. And that provided a 52.38% voter turnout. I believe in 2017, we had a 59.09% turnout, which a little low, but we were still over 50%, which was pretty good. Councilman Blair, what else would you like me to present? Would you like me to say the totals of the --
I'd like you to introduce the two new council members. I think that's appropriate, along with the mayor.
Okay. So both Billy Orr received the majority of valid ballots cast, so she will be inducted on November 19th. And Kathy Rusing received the majority of ballots cast, and she's in the audience. If you would like to stand up. And she will also be inducted on November 19th, and she will be taking her seat then.
Okay. Yes, Mayor, with that said, I move to approve the official canvas of the city of Prescott primary election held August 27th, 2019.
Second. We have a motion and second. Councilwoman Scholl, do you have something?
I just wanted to thank the voters for voting in this election. To have over 50% turnout on an off-year election where we only had city officials up for election is really impressive. And so I think that speaks volumes to how committed this community is and how involved this community is. And I just wanted to point that out, that is really impressive compared to other communities' turnout for local elections.
Very good. With that, we have a motion and second. Please vote. Councilman Good?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. We're going to move on to consent ordinance.
Item A, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1688, amending Title II, Chapter 2-8, Section 2-8-2 of the Prescott City Code. Item B, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1686, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. Item C, Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1687, authorizing the acceptance of a public drainage easement from Terry A. Burnett Living Trust, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay. Entertain a motion. Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance items 9A through 9C.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Councilman Good?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to item 10A, please.
Revise preliminary plat -- antelope crossing subdivision, extending the boundary of the subdivision, and adding 42 lots to Phases 4 and 5.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend a preliminary plat that was approved a number of years ago for a subdivision that's under construction. The proposal was to modify a section of that plat. Antelope Crossings is the name of the plat. It's being marketed as Sandalwood, so you'll see the sign, Sandalwood, at the location for a modification of Phase 4 and 5, and I'll show you parts of all of that on the overhead, to remove some properties that were originally laid out with the intent of some type of commercial development occurring, and replace them with properties that involve open space and some residential use. So that is what was originally approved, and you'll notice that this northernmost section was reserved for potential commercial use of the site. It's proposed to be replaced with this, and this proposal realigns several of the streets within the neighborhood, and it adds 41 additional lots to the subdivision in that northern area. That was done in recognition of some practicality issues associated with that site. So I'm going to go back to the northern edge and just point out a couple of things. The roundabout location here causes very limited access to be available to this parcel. A right-in possible here and a right-out possible here are the only ways to get into a commercial site, which renders it nearly useless as a commercial site. Multiple points of access in and out is far preferred, and at that point, with the volume of traffic that flows on the roadways, both Willow Creek Road and 89, the concept of doing commercial there is difficult, if not impossible. You have a very short proximity here as well to the current alignment of Willow Creek Road. And in a moment, we'll introduce Craig Dotset to talk a little bit about that particular alignment and what future holds for it. One of the questions that came up during the review process for that location was specifically that road alignment. that road alignment when it went before our Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission had some concerns about the curve itself and about the lack of access. The commissioners expressed almost universally support for this change, but their concern was access for additional houses beyond those already approved here, onto the roadway, and then this curve. So again, part of the discussion which will follow in just a moment is what will happen to that curve that will improve that circumstance. I've also had a lot of questions from various sources on the impact of removing potential commercial sites from that particular area, especially within the Deepwell Master Plan. So a couple of points that I think are helpful. One is, the city's commercial zoning allows residential development by right. So having something zoned a commercial designation in no way requires it be developed for commercial uses. That is up to the property owner to make that decision. If a residential use of commercial zone property is a better market strategy for that property owner, they have the right to do that under our current codes. However, another issue which jumps into play with this particular area is because of the Deepwell Master Plan that was adopted a couple of years ago by city council, and I'm going to zoom out on this one because it's important. So this small area associated with the roundabout here and the curve of the road there lies right there in the very small area of Deepwell Master Plan. So this boundary happens to be, and I'm going to go outside the color here, the boundary of Deepwell Master Plan. It incorporates all of that. Within that boundary, the area shown in tan on the screen above is that area that was set aside as potential commercial. So just like our original zoning, which allows the potential for commercial, they have far exceeded the amount that was originally located in this area that would have allowed commercial. So this is, this created a much larger, more expansive, and more comprehensively looked at potential for commercial uses throughout that entire master plan, barring a couple of areas. So the area in white over here, strictly single-family residential, that's what the master plan calls for. This area, strictly civic uses that will not have an adverse impact on the airport. The airport runway extends out over this, and that area is a buffer to prevent either general commercial uses or residential uses to occur. So this happens to, as part of the master planning concept, created a potential for residential and commercial throughout the entire area, but specifically and importantly created a much larger area of potential commercial uses, again, subject to the desires of property owners and appropriate proximity to roadways, intersections, roundabouts, et cetera. So we may have a very minute area where commercial has gone away, but you have a much larger area where commercial was created through the master planning process that did not exist prior to that master planning process. We do have Craig Dotson here to talk a little bit about the alignment of Willow Creek Road at the northern edge of the proposed modification to the plan. And again, our planning commission, because of the concerns about that proximity, failed to have a quorum to make a recommendation positive or negative. There were only four members present. One was absent due to a sickness, and one was a vacant position, and I can't recall the other, but we only had four members. It takes four to vote in favor of something to give you a recommendation, and we had a split vote, three to one. So you got no recommendation from them, but they clearly expressed their desires, and that was, do something with the roadway, and this makes perfect sense after that.
So it was three to one, you said, George?
It was three to one.
George, look at that last paragraph of your report, because I'm counting six. It failed three to three.
Correct.
On your staff report? So I don't know. Just want to make sure you've got your number.
Mayor, there were two different votes on two different occasions. In one, in one failed, I believe it was...
You're correct. I apologize.
Yeah.
So the last vote was three-three?
Yes, the last vote was three-three. The necessity to get four for a positive recommendation wasn't met because of the three-three. You needed four members.
Okay. We have a couple comments. We want to do that before we get to Craig. Councilman Blair?
Do you have the whole plat map of the Saddlewood or Antelope Point, whatever you want to call it, all the phases?
I do, but it's...
Can you show me, George? I think if I'm not mistaken, there's already, as it exists out there today, two access points that enter Willow Creek Road.
There will be a total of three altogether.
Correct, but there's two now.
Two now, and this northern one would be created with this plat.
I guess that's where I...
So that would be the third access.
That's where I don't have an addition, any issue with them changing this to residential. They can do it based upon the code, number one. And number two, understanding what we approved several years ago with Yapai Regional Medical Center, and maybe Craig's going to address that. That corner that's really a hairball corner in the first place becomes a roundabout that will service Yapai Regional Medical Center. Is that correct? Okay.
He'll get to that in a second.
Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. George, just a question. Does a master plan community have a maximum amount of residential units?
The master plan that was approved by council for Depot Ranch has a maximum number of residential units. And it also has a maximum square footage of commercial. Commercial's regulated by square footage as opposed to a number of units.
So it's not as though these residences, there's 42 additional residences to the master plan, these...
No, that's correct. These are 42 additional residences within this subdivision, which is a small piece of the master plan. So it doesn't really affect the overall count for the master plan area. That's still a maximum number that was established by the approval of city council.
Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Having attended, it seems like for a whole lifetime, several meetings on this issue, my question still comes back, you had planning and zoning split twice, on their concerns over the impact on how that road has been designed, and what's going to be the mitigation plan to alleviate the public health risk on that squirrely curve, as Blair would call it, or whatever he said there, because that curve seemed to be the bone of contention with P&amp;Z. And if you could explain again what's being done, I mean, a private property owner does have a right, by code, by law, to develop his property. What he doesn't have a right to do is develop his property in a manner that would create a public health or safety risk. The public needs to know what's being done to mitigate that public health and safety risk, so they fully understand that our engineers are determining whether or not that has been adequately addressed.
Thank you. You're correct, and that was one of the discussion points by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the concern for safety of the roadway. It was expressed to them at that time that the city engineering department was contemplating modifications to change the alignment, which perhaps will make it safer, or perhaps make it more amenable to faster speeds for traffic there. Again, that's something that the Public Works Director will address in just a moment.
Okay, so we'll be able to see that again after Public Works has addressed that issue, so that when we sit here and make a decision as to whether or not we're going to approve this, that this has been addressed first.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, George.
Well, and you're saying, planning and zoning didn't benefit from that presentation from Public Works in that regard?
It wasn't ripe to make that presentation at that point in time. So it is now, and we do have the Public Works Director who can address that.
And that was their major concern?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the rest of the council, the situation with the road was more mitigated post-meeting between Craig and the developer. So I think Craig would kind of provide additional information.
Yep, let's hear from Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll have Craig come up.
So we're actually talking about commercial, we're not doing away with commercial. We're shifting. So where the residential is going, then there's shift of, because I always hear that we take commercial, and I know they can do it by the zoning, but, so, we're not doing away with commercial, we're just shifting it.
In this particular case, again, associated with the master plan, when council adopted that master plan, you created a much, much larger potential for commercial in the area than existed previously.
Because originally, antelope was not in the master plan, right?
That's correct.
They were outside.
It was annexed in at the time of the adoption of the master, annexed into the master plan at the time of that master plan adoption.
And the three entries, there's two, one way in, one way out? I mean, there's a right-in and a right-out?
Right-in, right-out at the northernmost and the southernmost, and then the center one will have full turning movements.
And that's a signal?
That will be a signalized intersection.
It's a signalized, okay.
Yeah, just before Craig gets up again, thank you, Mayor. Here again, we'll, you know, P&amp;Z, we have boards and commissions for a reason, all right? These are the folks that we entrust, that have planning and zoning, or whatever the case would be, for the various boards and commissions, knowledge on what to look at before a recommendation is brought forward to this council for either approval or denial, okay? What I would like to know is why wouldn't this go back, now that you've said, we've mitigated this, we've mitigated this, we've done this, we've done this, why wouldn't it go back to P&amp;Z before it comes here first to make sure that P&amp;Z is comfortable with what's going on?
So there are a couple of reasons for that. The first and primary is that their role in looking at a proposed modification to a subdivision is to look at the subdivision and its boundaries. They have a secondary role in looking a little beyond that, and that's what they hung up on. As far as the subdivision itself and the changes within its boundaries, they were in favor of that. They were concerned about the actions outside of the subdivision. Again, that road curve, which is a city street, it's a public street, and not the developer's sole responsibility to make changes to. So their concern for the exterior thing, the street, the curve, will be addressed by our Public Works Department, and internally, they were in support of this modification as it made more sense than trying to force-fit commercial into a piece of property that simply isn't appropriate for commercial.
And while I understand that, George, P&amp;Z is also charged with looking at appropriate land use as to how it's going to impact public health and safety. In this particular case, the public health and safety has to do with the road, all right? Does adding X amount of residential units, or X amount of commercial, or eliminating residential units, or trading them around, et cetera, does that, or does that not, by land use, impact public health and safety until such time as we see what engineering is recommending be done to mediate that road situation?
One thing that may help is that we've talked with the P&amp;Z commissioners following the meeting and promised that we will provide the information back to them, a report back to them on the modifications that Public Works will be offering up to you in a moment, and the discussion that they're going to give you, so that they know what's been done outside, again, the public safety aspect of it, for their comfort level. That was something that they accepted as well.
Let's get to Craig Dotson. Maybe he has some answers for us.
Okay, maybe a little brief history on why we have what we have there today. So originally, when Willow Creek Road was in the concept stage and being designed back about 10 years ago, Willow Creek Road was not considered to be the primary up through here. There was an additional roadway that was being considered from the curve, further west, and then down, and this Willow Creek alignment was going to be an internal road. Again, that was like 10 years ago. So what we have is, the configuration that we currently have there at the curve was going to be a slip lane to a roundabout. So that's why it has the weird double curve to it, where it sends you away and then around the curve. So that's why what we have today, and that's what we're looking at correcting. Even before this question came up, through P&amp;Z, we were already in discussions with the developer as we were working on reviewing projects in that area, discussing the curve and an ultimate solution for that. With the discussion of P&amp;Z, as well as the design that the developer currently has to expand in this area of Willow Creek Road, by a long Saddlewood, and then Westwood is coming on the west side of the street. In that area, they have a design in right now under review that expands Willow Creek Road to the ultimate configuration of four lanes. So in conjunction with that, we knew that was coming, we were already talking about how to fix the curve, so we have accelerated that. Public Works currently has a contract with design team working on that, and we are under design for the curve change. So being that the developer, being that the developer already has plans in place under review to expand Willow Creek Road from like here, south, down to what will be Warrior Way, where Trinity School is coming in, they have those design plans in currently under review. So then, with our design, we're looking at also correcting the curve with a more appropriate radius, put taper in the roadway, as well as go to the four-lane configuration, because it would make no sense at all for us to come in here and change this to two lanes and just bring a bottleneck around the corner, because we already have the four-lane configuration coming off of the State Route 89 roundabout. So we would continue with that right around and connect into the design plans that the developer has in with us now. As we were talking about this together, developer is willing to work with us on trading right-of-way, because we will need to acquire some on the inside curve, but then we will have excess on the outside curve, so that we can swap right-of-way back, as well as we're discussing partnership between the developer and the city, because there's a benefit to the developer for the dirt that's in the area. So as we do the roadwork, the additional fill material can benefit their project. So we have the potential to be able to partner on it and reduce the ultimate cost for the city to correct the curve and bring it into this type of configuration.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that before we go forward in approving this, that curve is being addressed. That's a dangerous curve, has been a dangerous curve, and it needs to be fixed.
We're working on it.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, Craig, talking about the curve...
I have a comment.
So when you were talking about the curve, when George was originally talking about the curve, it kind of went out like this, and then back through there like that, and we're just going to cut it like that?
We, you can see it a little bit in, inside of here. The existing is right there.
That's the inside, yeah.
So we will substantially change the radius on the curve, and then also, like I said, we can, we can put some taper in it as well.
So you're not going to be going out and then back in?
We'll remove as much of that as we can, and leave.
But no roundabouts going to be there, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the ultimate concept was that this intersection here was going to continue to the west off of that curve, so that's why it was being considered for a roundabout. Now that is not in the consideration with development planned in the area. And on here, with actually, the replat concept helps with this as well, as you can see, George, you want to zoom in on that a little more? These are old, right? And these are the newer, correct? Okay. So these were the original platted lot configurations, and now they are coming back to here. So then, the original plat would conflict with us trying to improve that curve with the original. So by those going away, that allows that to come in where there is originally, currently platted lots available to be built.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I have some similar concerns that Councilman Lamerson just articulated. I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings where this was looked at more than once, listened to the deliberations, and I agree that those commissioners, in general, have a pretty good understanding of what the impact can be for changing of easements. Now, you've got a particularly high hill that separates some of those corner lots that are being proposed with the current roadway, and we're hearing a suggestion of a... a draft correction from Mr. Dotset that is not a final plan, and it's important that the final plans are thoroughly reviewed for their safety aspects. I think before we go ahead and tell the developer to start putting in roads and preparing these lots for building, there may be an impact of that redesign in this approval, and I just think this is premature to bring it forward for council approval until we have a firm understanding of what the design is to mitigate this safety issue. We've already seen a semi-truck trailer that took that curve too fast and ended rolling over. Now fortunately, there was no injuries, but if that truck trailer happened to be carrying flammable material, there quite likely might have been. And now that we're going to be putting residential homes in this area, I think that we need to be a little bit more deliberate and make sure that we have an acceptable plan that has been reviewed and approved by Planning and Zoning before we go ahead as a council and approve this change. Now, I agree, when I saw the original plan, and as you know, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a couple of years when Deepwater Ranch Development came forward, and this was initially expected to be commercial, which got my head scratching, because how the heck are you going to stick a commercial development into that northeast part of the design, and, or northwest part of the design, and with such difficult or minimal access to a commercial development? So that made sense for me not to say it has to remain as a commercial section, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. So putting the residential in there and replacement of it is not a bad idea, but it still needs to be, in my opinion, thoroughly reviewed and approved by our Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what their task to do. So I just feel that this is premature, and that because of that, I would not be supportive.
Thank you, Councilman Good. Mayor Protem?
Yes, so George, what is the timeline that we're looking at for the design and the road being completed and fixed?
I believe in regards to the design, I can probably say that we can have a design by February or March.
Okay, and then for construction?
And then that would be, ultimately, it's, would work out the best if we were working with the developer on that. Should be able to follow close or behind. Any concepts or ideas?
Trip like a year?
If we complete the design, like in March, then we would be ready to go right out for bid.
And then the houses would not be going in until, what's the timeline for?
Mayor, council members, Vic Chapman, Chamberlain Development, one of the things that I'd like, could you put up the preliminary plat one more time, please, just for a quick, I think, correction? This is the preliminary plat that was already approved, and as you will note, there is an approved access already at that curve. And of the 43 homes that we're requesting, about half of them are in the upper eight acres, the other half are down in the middle of the page, where there was a three-acre parcel that was purchased from the Ron James family, or Deepwater Ranch, and so we've kept an acre out of that as a potential commercial site, the rest of it is homes. And so, and they're kind of on the, almost in the middle of the subdivision, so they have an opportunity to either come out or to go north. But I just wanted to point out that all three of the access points were approved already in the preliminary plat that we did a couple of years ago, so we're not asking for an additional access point. So I thought that was, that's an important thing to remember. As far as when we expect to have this next phase open, which is Phase Four, it's about six months.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilman Blair?
George, what's the overall density, or maybe Vic, maybe you know that, of that, the first phases of Saddlewood?
They're about four to four and a half per acre. We don't have near that density in that northern portion.
I guess the point I'm trying to get at is the fact remains, there's already two access points that are already built within that development.
Correct.
So the question I'm asking is, how many, it's got two access points in and out, how many houses service those access points? Is it 200, 400?
Oh, the total is going to be just less than 300, 295.
That's Phase One and Two?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or that's total?
Total. But I will point out that this third access point, which is near the curve, will not be built until Phase Five. So Phase Four is the six months away, which, can you point to Phase Four? Right in there? Correct. So that access point won't be built until Phase Four, and the way we're going out there, we're going to be lucky to get four done before they run out of lots.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is the fact that we already approved three access points in there, and the fact being is, we know that it's a dangerous corner and it needs to be improved before, there needs to probably be a trigger, before Phase Five is given the go-ahead, because Phase Four can still exit out of either of the two exits. So I don't personally see why we preclude, not making sure we keep Exit Three closed off until the road situation's fixed. But the plating of those lots and everything have been ongoing, and for us to put a stop to that because of us trying to figure out using number three, I don't think we should do that. But that's just my opinion, because there's not enough houses, there's plenty of access for fire department and for emergency medical to get in and out of that subdivision, as it sits today with Phase Four being built.
So then, Councilman, you're saying that Phase Five should not be built until we get the road?
That's what I would say.
That would be the trigger. Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. Are we doing this out of respect for the Planning and Zoning Commission, or are we doing this for some utilitarian reason, from the standpoint of, you know, if we decided to stop this whole thing until Planning and Zoning saw it again, until you redid the road, are we doing that to respect the Planning and Zoning Commission, or are we doing that for a more utilitarian reason?
I got to say, I was on Planning Commission for four years, too, as chairman, and you know what, the Planning and Zoning Commission ruled upon, based upon what they felt, and they agree with the change in doing the residential, they don't agree with the road.
That's right.
So if you don't build Five until the trigger of the road's fixed, that meets the objective of Planning and Zoning. I don't see the necessity of bogging them down with any more comment.
And I would agree with that.
I can agree with that.
We got a trigger for Five.
What you don't, yeah, what you don't want to do is you don't want to impact that already dangerous road more than you need to, and it doesn't have anything to do with more or less respecting Planning and Zoning. What it has to do with is public health and safety.
Yeah, we heard what they said.
Fact is, P and Z has said over and over, that's not safe out there, get it fixed before we go farther.
I think Mr. Chapman would agree with that. I mean, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but you know it's not safe.
I would agree with that. It was unsafe before we started building the first home, so.
Councilman Scholl?
I guess my question would be, how do we confirm or make sure that Phase Five doesn't start being built until that road is done?
Can I address that?
Yeah.
I think what we'd like is a preliminary plat amendment approval for Four and Five, and make that a stipulation of the final plat for Phase Five, if that works.
I can see that.
Does that make sense, George?
It does, and that was something I hadn't gotten to in the presentation. There is a final plat that has to follow this, so there is one final action by council before they can record that plat and construct the homes.
So it comes before us, so we can monitor that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Councilman Good, I heard you say something a minute ago that you agreed with what Councilman Blair was saying, is that right?
That's correct. I mean, I don't have an objection to Phase Four, I think that's fine, and they have two different potential ingress, that's a safety there. This Route 7A, you know, could change in its design based upon the fix of that curve. So my primary concern is that Phase Five design that could be impacted by the redesign, the more safe design of the curve itself. So that's where my primary concern lies. So if there's a way of just approving Phase Four and holding Phase Five until final design and fix has been reviewed and we agree on it, I don't know if that's even an option here, I think we have to vote up or down, don't we?
Well, we could change, George, could we change this?
In fairness to this particular project, at this stage, it's a preliminary plat, so they have to come back to you, and you'll have the option to separate out those approvals if it's appropriate at that time, before approving the final plats for Phase Four and Five. So there's another bite of the apple that council has later, where you can hold it up if the city's work in conjunction with the developer hasn't proceeded far enough along. So at this stage, it really is a preliminary plat revision.
Yeah, fair enough, so.
For Four and Five.
We could do the preliminary plat Four and Five today, but we still have another shot for the final plat later, where we could hold back Five at that time.
That is correct.
Okay.
And the applicant has stipulated to that as being a viable mechanism to proceed forward?
Yes, I think that would be, yeah, a fair statement. It was several months ago that Mr. Dotseth and I started this conversation, and I approached him and said, you know, I don't see an opportunity for this curve to be fixed with the future development as I know it, because I know generally what's going on around it. And so we agreed to work together to see if we could figure out how it works, since we control both sides of the road and take care of that, so.
Fair enough. Anything else from presenters? Craig?
So this is the existing approved preliminary plat today. If we hold with this today, then I can't design the road to go through these lots. We need those to help with the design for the fix, and the proposed does that for us.
Yeah, so it's essential for you to move forward to have the preliminary plat on Four and Five approved in order to move forward. That makes sense. Anything else, George, you guys, council? Council, anything else? A public comment?
No, Mayor?
Okay.
I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting for here. Are you saying that if we vote for this today, that Phase Five will not be built on until there's another action by council?
That is correct, Councilman. So just to be clear, as you know, we're approving preliminary plat Phases Four and Five, but we have another approval later for the final plat, and we could pull out Phase Five on that final plat approval.
Until the road's fixed.
Until the.
Yeah, I mean, driven by that curve, and I've seen those areas already graded, you know, they've, it looks like they're just about ready to start construction on the road, plans and everything else. So as long as it's on the record, that's not going to continue until we make a final decision, then under those conditions, I could support it.
Right, again, they have to bring Phases Four and Five final plat to the council, so at that time, that's our opportunity to monitor the progress on the curve before we do the final plat approval on Phase Five.
And I think, Phil, what he was saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to approve the preliminary plat before the design on the road continues with the developer, so it does make sense.
Mayor Protem?
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to say, that Councilman Blair said, is that I heard you say, Craig, that you can't go ahead with the design until Phase Five is amended.
That's correct.
And that's what we're voting on today.
Councilman Larsson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the clear picture on this one. We're not here to obstruct this private property owner, that's not why we're here. Why we're here is to make sure that the public health and safety moving forward is not compromised. That's where my major concern is. Having sat through those P and Zs, that's where theirs were, and as long as by doing it this way, the public's assured that this is going to be moving in the best way we can move forward to ensure that their safety on that road is not going to be continually moved forward in that unsafe condition, because that road is not safe as it is.
Any other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve PLN 19-010, a revised preliminary plat for antelope crossing subdivision.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you all for.
We need to do one more, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
I move to approve city contract number 2020-005.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, councillor. Today's quote is coming to us from Theodore Roosevelt. "If you kicked the person in the pants responsible for most of your trouble, you wouldn't sit for a month." This meeting is adjourned.